Like to call this work session for February sixth, twenty twenty four to order. If you can, uh, please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, that is a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the work session agenda.
I move approval as presented.
Second.
Job of motion by Commissioner Brown, and a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, public input. Do we have anybody for public input? Okay, no one for public input. Careful what you ask for, huh? Getting used to another computer. Okay, moving on to, uh, presentations, which we have none. County reports. We're gonna have our, our directors' reports. Okay, first report's gonna be from our Grant County Airport Manager, Rebecca.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, I'm happy to report that we're fully staffed at the airport and our newest airport technician, Lauren Gonzalez, is certified EMT one, so that was a nice addition to our staff. Helping us kind of round out the skill set out there, so. We've moved into our new facility and we're working to get it furnished and then we will transition our pilot's lounge from our old building into the new building and along with that, I'm hoping to start developing a better marketing plan so that we can start bringing in more transient traffic. Um, we're working with a couple national, uh, FBO, fixed base operator, uh, organizations that try to bring traffic in. Uh, one of the things that I've been told that is really appealing about our airport and our location is that we are a quick turn for fueling, so instead of going into El Paso or Mesa, other places, they can come in, they can have their order already set up with us for fuel, they can get in, they can turn, and they can go. And so it actually cuts down on the amount of pilot time and wait time that they have, uh, making us a very appealing stop. So it's kind of exciting and I'm looking forward to being able to better market us now that we have good facilities and our infrastructure's coming together. Uh, we're looking at in the next two weeks, we will take possession of our expanded fuel farm, so that's exciting for me. We'll be doing our training, uh, with our engineering staff next Wednesday, so we'll have everybody on site to kind of learn the new systems. Um, another improvement that comes with that, in the past when we would test our fuel, we would do something and that, we would end up paying to have that fuel, uh, disposed of because it was considered waste fuel. Part of our new system has recovery tanks and so the fuel that we were throwing away, we can actually put back into the system. And so it's, you know, just a really fantastic project and see it come together like this has been really exciting for us. Other projects we're working on, uh, we had a grant from New Mexico Aviation and we've completed an airfield assessment. And so we found some repairs that we needed to have done and so part of that, uh, Southwest Solar and Electric has been working with us to basically get us back to snuff. Um, our airport beacon had some, it was actually put together with residential lighting, uh, electrical, and so we've updated that and got it back to where it should be. It actually is looking pretty nice out there. We've got the, um, fall protection now for our beacon. Just a lot of little things that over the years had kind of been passed over. And so we're getting, uh, the airport really in a good position for the future. Uh, we're gonna be basically working on a long-term maintenance plan so that we don't fall back into this pattern of fifteen years later, we realize that something needed to be done, so. Um, our future projects, uh, I'm working to get funding for new T-hangers. Um, we've already completed design, engineering, we're ready to go to bid on it. It's just a matter of finding funding. And so I'll be going back to the state again and asking for more money and hopefully we'll be able to go out and put in eight new T-hangers. Uh, we do have a waitlist that we've basically had eleven people on consistently since I got here. And so we would have people for the facility. Um, we're seeing a lot of people move into this area right now who have aviation backgrounds. And they're looking to start, you know, a couple of our tenants are starting to work with the school districts to do some STEM education. And we're really hoping the airport can be a big part of that. So it's pretty exciting. We've got some. The future's looking bright for the community and the airport and I really feel like we're in a good position now to take advantage of it, so. Any questions?
Commissioner Brown?
Very positive report.
Yeah.
Um, besides the sale of fuel, which I understand generates revenue for us, are there other economic benefits to us to having an increase in transient traffic?
Sure. I mean, I think that we have the opportunity to bring in, you know, people who might become interested in, in development. We have plenty of land at the airport that's open for development. Um, I, we can see it that way, obviously the tourism aspect of it. A lot of corporations have gone to using private jet service post-COVID. And so that traffic is out there and I think bringing it to our area is a, a positive where we can better market not only the airport but our community as well.
So I probably misunderstood then. The, these flights are transient but stay around long enough that there is actually a tourism?
There can be, yeah.
People can make their way into town.
Yeah. We have Silver Rentals now out at the airport, so it's a local rental car company. And they keep at least four vehicles generally on site. Um, and so in the past, that was kind of, uh, missing link for us is that when Enterprise went away, we didn't have any rental cars available. And so having them on site is, you know, opened up an opportunity where people come in and they can get to town. Um, you know, we direct a lot of these, you know, folks that come through to our local restaurants, hotels. As part of the service that us as a fixed base operator, you know, we get out and we try to get that information and make it available to them so that they come in and it's a seamless process for them.
I had this image that they would hang out in the new pilot's lounge and never see more of Grant County.
Uh, no, I mean, we, we have quite the view out there. It's, it's actually very appealing. And when you have this facility that we have that has open windows that shows, you know, basically all the way to town and up until the Gila, it's, it's really, you know, heart breathtaking for people when they come in.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Moving on to our next report, be the detention center, Mr. Andesola.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, this is a report for the detention center. I do have an update for that report on the officer openings. Uh, we had four openings, but now we have five. We did conduct an interview last week and we are in the process of the hiring process. The application for accreditation, your update is it is complete, the application for accreditation. I didn't meet with the county manager. I signed off on it, she signed off on it. Now we're just gonna request the PO, as soon as the PO is, uh, submitted, we're gonna apply for accreditation. I do know that, uh, the accreditation council's meeting is next month in March because I'm a member of the council. So I think we'll go over that application and approve it and then move forward with the accreditation process. On Ju- on January thirtieth, our population was sixty detainees with an average daily population for January of seventy. As of Tuesday, January thirtieth, we have zero COVID positives. Our RISE program for January had twenty-one RISE participants with fourteen in the facility and seven in the community. I do, uh, see we're gonna get a little bit more in-depth in our five-year plan for our RISE because we have a lot of, uh, plans for the RISE program. I know that they're talking in the legislature to making that RISE fund be permanent for detention centers. I think that'd be something really great as we move forward. I do know that, uh, Lincoln County is coming this Thursday to go over our RISE program and maybe assist theirs and kind of work together in developing that RISE program. We do have a lot of plans for our RISE, like working on that portable building, which we shifted here something today from the state to see if they could help with funding for that portable building, which I'm sure that they'll, they'll go ahead and help us out. And also what we decided to do was start having graduations for the RISE participants, not only in the facility but outside in our community offices. So we held our first graduation in the community offices, uh, last Thursday and we invited the family and, and brothers and sisters of the RISE participants. So something that I'd like to talk to the county manager about is maybe developing a RISE page along with the Grant County social media page and seeing how we go about putting those, uh, graduations, not only on social media but maybe the newspaper and just really celebrating the accomplishments that these detainees have had participating in the RISE program. Uh, future projects, we did have, uh, corporal testing last week and we're gonna have the interviews within a week. We did have one applicant. In February, we're gonna do some maintenance on our door sliders. I know the facility is about eleven to twelve years old. So we're gonna replace some door sliders and some locks. Also, we're gonna do the retrofit on the cuff passes in the recreation yard. I'd like to thank maintenance, uh, the last two weeks, we've been doing that HVAC system replacement, so now the HVACs have been replaced. I'd like to thank maintenance for their help. I'd like to thank IT that's always out there helping us. We did our yearly swap out of some of the computers. That way we replace our computers every five years. Uh, IT's been very helpful with that also. Thank you for the new computer, Adam. Also, we're teaming up with the Mexico counties and having training here in Silver City. We're gonna hold a first-line supervisor training in March where we can host other counties and then we get that training also. We have some supervisors that need to attend that training. And our key event dates, we have that FTO training for Coco Ponce. We had set it up previously, but that instructor had to cancel due to an emergency. So that FTO training is scheduled in February from the twenty-first to the twenty-third. And again, just currently updating that five-year plan for twenty twenty-four and making sure that we get really in-depth with that RISE program and what we wanna do. Uh, speaking to our RISE personnel and staff, they have a lot of plans and different things they wanna do, not only in the facility, but kind of expand that community outreach. And what we're asking the state now is if we can maybe have the participants, the detainees in the jail, include the family in the counseling, that way they can have a transition into the community and the family and the detainees still attend that counseling and we're able to do the RISE out there in the community office also. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you.
Questions? No, I just want to thank you for your forward thinking, which you always have. Appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you. Doing a good job. Thank you for everything. Okay, next report's gonna come from our emergency manager, Mr. Scott Fuller.
Good morning Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning.
To give a quick rundown, um, with emergency management, um, piece of what I've been doing lately. We finally do have access to IPaws now, um, as of last week. The test environment and the live environment, so I played with it this past weekend, uh, familiarized myself with it. Loaded in, loaded up, drew, uh, drew some maps, uh, loaded up some pre-existing maps, uh, got with, got with, uh, the COGS in the area, put them all, loaded them all there and some, a bunch of extra information, so. It's already, it's there for us to go. Like I mapped out, uh, like the town of Hurley, I have that in there right now, so I can just click on that and it comes up and I could do, uh, um, like an alert for, uh, tank cars spilling in the town of Hurley. Uh, so it's already mapped out, just go in there and click on it and shoot the message right out to the folks in Hurley. It's that simple, so. It took us a while to get there. Uh, there were some issues with FEMA, but as they say, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so you keep at it enough, they'll, they'll finally listen to you, so. It, and so we're, we're good to go with that now. And, and with that, um, when working with Adam, talked to him yesterday with the new county website. He can, uh, go in here and put up banner and it'll come across, uh, on the website itself for emergency notifications. So the banner will scroll across the top all the time. And, um, when I do these, when I did these test messages, of course you put in there for further information. I can go to the Grant County webpage and, um, that'll be scrolling across the top and you can click on that and it'll be more information there, so. And it's the first thing you, when you pull it up, it's right there, it grabs your eye on the, on the webpage. And Adam could probably add some more to that, so that, that'll help with the notification process also. Um, the next thing with, with the, uh, the hazard mitigation plan. I worked with Veronica and we got the RFP done on that and submitted to the state. It was approved. And, um, it's going out for bid now, uh, for, for the contractors to, for the vendors to look at and, and, uh, make an offer on. And I think as of five o'clock yesterday, they were supposed to submit, uh, official paperwork on their intent to offer. So we should have many vendors, potential vendors we have to, uh, to do the hazard mitigation plan. I'm also working on some other grants, uh, within New Mexico counties with their wildfire fire reduction program. I'm gonna work on that grant, have that in hopefully by next month. Um, and with that, um, I guess the county manager and Randy have, uh, partnered up and contracted with Insight Network, um, that can help the county with their strategic planning issues and help with grant routing, which would be great for us. So I'm, I'm meeting with them tomorrow and, and maybe they have some better ideas and to help us write better grants and, and, um, get more funding for the county. We'll switch over to the, the, the fire management, uh, side of it. We finished up the audit for the, uh, fire protection funds for FY twenty-three. The audit's been completed and accepted by the state. As far as, uh, the ISO being town at the end of February, beginning of March to do the ISO evaluation of Fort Bear Fire Department. Additionally, um, I've got it noted near, um, we're gonna do our wildland fire training this month. Actually, the dates changed, could be, uh, next weekend and the weekend of the twenty-third and twenty, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We'll get everybody trained up for the wildland for the, uh, I guess it's the SR one thirty to one ninety. So we got quite a few folks signed up for that for the training. And, uh, if you notice at the bottom, I've, I've made a note about the central square dispatcher being town at the end of the month to provide the CAD training to the, uh, the Grant County Regional Dispatch Authority folks. And I guess some of the sheriff's folks would be in there too for that and Silver City Fire Department. Hopefully, once that gets, uh, they're gonna start the training process for that, so hopefully by next summer, early summer, we'll have the CAD in pro- CAD in place and that, that'll provide much better consistency with the dispatching. And we can also put, uh, our dispatch parameters in there so to be, so the computer will dispatch whatever we input in there instead of right now, there's really is no official policy on what is dispatched and how this, and how the fire apparatus is dispatched. So hopefully when this gets all done, it should, we should have a very consistent way of dispatching apparatus come this summer when the CAD is fully implemented. And the last thing I wanna touch on is, I know, Chairman Fonzie, that the AED issues that you spoke about previous meeting, I've got the AEDs here. It's, it's funny, I talked to the folks at Members and, uh, Gila, the, the senior centers and they had AEDs there up to last summer and then HMS removed them because they felt it was a liability to have AEDs on site, so they actually removed them. But, um, I've got the, um, the new AEDs are in. I've got two for the senior centers and I got two for the sheriff's vehicles that are gonna be on the periphery of the county, so they'll have them in their car also. Through, uh, our chief downers folks, I've got training lined up for the staff at both facilities. I'm still getting a little pushback from the HMS management folks, I don't know why, but they're still pushing back a little bit on it. So, but I think we'll, we'll eventually break through and, and get everything, everything should be in place by next meeting.
So you're getting pushed back because they're going in the buildings?
Yes, because they're going in. It's not from the staff. The staff at both facilities are all for it and they're, they look forward to it, but still getting, I just talked to, uh, one of the members, one of the staff members at, members this morning and they had a meeting yesterday, uh, a phone meeting between three and five and they're still, you can see that they want the number, they want the information for our folks and they still haven't given them an answer yet. So I'm, I just feel about talking to the folks this morning, they're still getting some pushback from the HMS, from the management folks at HMS on putting them in there.
So, you know, and I was gonna bring that up, but I was gonna, I had it for my commissioner comments. This morning, I think I had the same conversation because he called asking for your number, which I gave it to him and I don't like to mention names, you know, because of, whatever. But anyway, that was the same conversation I had that they did have the units there and then they were, they were taken down. You know, I don't understand the liability of it. Uh, I think there's more liability and I don't know if our attorney's on the phone or, or county manager, but when you have something in place, it's safety and then you take it down, I think that creates more of a liability. Because it was there, now it's not. Um, the pushback, I don't see why they would push back because, you know, and as you're all aware, seniors are probably one of my top priorities, but, uh, you know, it's for their safety and to keep them safe and, and, you know, be not in Mimbres, be not in Gila, that, that's a long ways for EMS to, and I think our director can, can, uh, attest to that and, and any chance that we have to, to help them during something like this is, is, it's beyond me. I, I, I don't wanna get going, uh, why you take them out because of liability. I think they've created more of a liability in my opinion.
The, the staff is all for it and they're, they're excited about it. They're looking forward to it. That's not what, the issue is up with management.
Well, you know, what, what, what I would like to see and, 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 you know, I'm not gonna put you in the middle of this and I'm not gonna put our county manager in the middle of this, but Wednesday I do have a meeting and I'm gonna request that I get answers as to why it was taken down and their explanation as far as what their liability, what their thought process is in that liability because, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't go for that and I'm just gonna leave it at that.
That's, that's really disheartening, Mr. Fuller. Um, the conversations I had before I contacted the county manager was they were all about it. They're very pro, the, they, when we mentioned moving, went out to Cliff, they were really excited about it. That, that's really disheartening to hear.
The staff is very excited about it, yeah.
Yeah, the staff is, but, but to hear the management's that, that they're not happy about it, that's really concerning. Because we've made plans, we've talked about training.
Yes.
We've talked about every aspect.
Everything is lined up, you know, I, I've got, uh, Chief Downer, that, his folks are, they're lined up and ready to provide the training. It's just a matter of getting the approval from HMS to do it.
So when we discussed the training, we talked about, I think HMS staff has to meet a certain criteria. There might be an American Heart Association requirement.
That's who they have.
But I know that there was also ten or twelve residents that we had asked to come in and join in the training as well. And they had discussed, I don't know if they can go a lower level, a different type of training, but find that out because there are some residents that they wanna take the training, that do frequent the, the senior center in Mimbres. At least I can, and now Billy, I don't know if you can talk about Gila Valley, if they got some, some, some regulars that attend the, the, the senior center. But I think some of the people who are always there wanna do the training as well.
And, and I've been speaking with Mr. Wolfberg, that they have no problem with that even.
Okay.
None at all, so they're, they're actually, they're very excited about it.
Yeah, if you need something, as well as the chairman, if you need something with me, let me know, because we had, we had a really good conversation. It's hard to hear that.
I, I tried to get the training initially through HMS and I reached out to them twice and, uh, I got no response. I, I, I spoke to some folks initially and they, I provided my information to get with management and all I got was crickets.
Yeah, we got, we got the training also, we, we discussed training at through Gila Regional. And Kim Baragon was gonna do the training for free out there without taking that. She was gonna take her license from the hospital out there and do the training. So there's another avenue there if you guys need help or something.
Well, we're, like I said, I'm, I've already talked to the, so the, the folks at Pino Soto's are, are ready to go.
I don't care if it has it, I don't care if it does, as long as it gets done. Okay.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, you know, the only thing that occurs to me, uh, because this was an issue we had at our school, uh, is that you do have to have a routine for replacing the battery. And if you fail to do that, and I'm gonna admit that several years ago, we failed to do it, maybe that's the liability. Uh, that they weren't confident that they had a good enough process for replacing the battery, because otherwise those things are self-explanatory. I mean, sure, the training is good, but it talks you through it while.
Yes, it does.
While you're using it. So, uh, that's the only liability I can picture and, and, and so that raises my curiosity about, do we have a play, a plan in place for making sure those batteries are always charged up and, and good?
You know, that's a huge part to me because at the end of the day, any building, and I don't know what happens here, but I, I, I know where, my background and where I came from. At the end of the day, you inspect your building pretty much or, or the areas that, that you're responsible for and each supervisor inspects their area. To me, I would think that a senior center would have a sheet saying that this or that was inspected. Last time the batteries were replaced, somebody signing off on it. That's pretty well a simple directive to do workplace inspections. And, you know, if that's such a big deal, you got me going. If that's such a big deal, then, then that, that, that's, that's a wrong reason. And I understand that, that, I understand that we get busy in our areas and stuff like, I, I totally understand what you're saying, but it's, it's not a complicated process to me.
The batteries in the pads, the, as years on those.
So if you're.
At least two years.
At least two years, I think.
If you're looking to help with policy and procedure, New Mexico EMS Bureau and the Department of Health have a public access defibrillation program that you can steal off their website and you can follow it. And, I mean, you can call them up and they'll give you all the details to it. And it includes maintenance, battery maintenance, everything across the board. And these are people that put, they assist airports, putting them in airports and public buildings and Walmart and stuff like that. So public access defibrillation is, is something, it's actually pretty online in the, in the Bureau website.
Yeah, you know, and I've been hearing that a lot, that it's hard to get ahold of somebody for a senior center, so. Thank you. Um, could you do me a favor? Can you hit the arrow down a couple of times? Because my computer's like me, it's just going, doing circles. Who's next?
Thank you.
IT. Who?
IT.
Who is it? Fire management. We did that?
Just did that, IT.
IT? Okay, next report's gonna be for, from IT, our IT director?
Let's go back one.
Okay, let, let's just go, let's go finance, finance director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Um, what I have for my report is something that Scott's already touched base on. It's the release of the, um, hazard mitigation plan update. It went out for an RFP on the twenty-sixth of January. And the due date for these RFPs is February twenty-third. That is my report.
Any questions? No. Thank you, Linda. Now we go to our IT director, Mr. Baca.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For current projects, the new Grant County NM.gov website went live, uh, last month in January. So we've been benefiting from that and also trying to update it as often as we can as well. We've had a lot of requests, uh, internally on, uh, content and, uh, adding features, so it's, it's definitely been good. We've been benefiting from that right off the bat as far as, uh, different capabilities. One of the things that, uh, Mr. Fuller touched on was that we do have an ability to create an alert banner on the website if need be. And that can be used for, of course, uh, alerting purposes throughout the county. And it'll be the moment you log into the website, it'll be a banner that scrolls at the top. And yes, there can be more information behind it if anybody clicks on it. So we've definitely been enjoying and benefiting from that too. So, other projects, uh, just last week, we were able to implement Content Manager within ERP Pro Ten. And Content Manager basically allows us to add, uh, scanned electronic files into our ERP Pro Ten system, which is, uh, definitely gonna benefit us in the long run as far as file organization. We were able to complete network vulnerability management. We do have that in place. We'll turn this into a typical process every month as we look for vulnerabilities within our network and do what we can to eliminate those. As Rebecca touched on, she's now in the new facility there at the. As Rebecca touched on, she's now in the new facility there at the airport, which is great. We were able to work on getting infrastructure in place to make that happen. There is some fine tuning that we still need to do in order to make that, uh, even more streamlined and more efficient for them there, so we continue, we'll plan to continue to do that. We do need some coordination between ourselves and, uh, Western New Mexico Communications in order to make that happen, which is underway. And we also have the Nutanix server installs that is underway as well. This is what'll allow us to build our virtual environment, basically virtualizing all of our physical servers. It's, it's still gonna be a process as far as getting that going, because projects on this scale, we definitely find that we have issues that, uh, come out of the woodwork. You know, it's, it's very rare that a project on this scale is very smooth, so we have run into some roadblocks, but that's okay. We know we'll get through them and continue on with the configurations and eventually be at the, uh, point where we want to be regarding our server infrastructure. Regarding future projects, uh, once we do have Nutanix underway, that's when we'll begin virtualizing our physical servers. And hopefully, within this year, we'll be able to consider the possibility of migrating our Tyler Eagle services to the cloud as well. Now, we've done a portion of that, which was in code, which is now referred to as ERP Pro Ten. That's where all of our financial modules, HR modules, that's where they sit. So we've done a portion of it, but, uh, if possible, we'll see if we can consider that route in twenty-twenty-four for the Eagle services, which would be recorder for the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and then, of course, for the assessors as well. As far as key event dates go, it was, uh, just yesterday that, uh, my department went through an additional training on the network vulnerability management tool that we have. We asked some other questions, got some further insight on reporting, and how to identify certain changes and things that happen in the network. So that was definitely very, very good for us, to be able to drill down a little bit further and get some better understanding on this tool that we have in place now. So that's, uh, the report I have for this month. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Adam.
Questions? Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Adam.
The website looks excellent. It's, it's like a, a major improvement.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, if we have suggestions about it, do we send those to you, or is it a different member of your staff, to you?
Yes, you can send them to me.
Okay, and, uh, you got and responded to my concern about the site certificate?
Correct.
Uh, that was expired?
Right.
And now I've forgotten my main question. Oh, maybe it'll come back to me. I'll email you if I remember it, but.
You got it.
Overall, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Next report's gonna be, uh, from maintenance, Mr. Lockett?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Uh, as you have in front of you is the maintenance report. Uh, under current projects, uh, we are currently remodeling the back bathrooms behind the chambers to provide those a more modern look. Courthouse fire alarm installs at ninety percent, ninety percent complete, um, and we're also working on, um, completing the deficiencies in the safety inspection that was conducted on December seventh with Mr. Chavez from the Mexico Counties. Uh, a big part of that was the new drainage grading behind administration. Uh, we'll get to those pictures here in a minute. Uh, under future projects, the laundry room washer upgrades reconfigured at the detention center. Uh, Baton Park electrical service upgraded pavilion and vault toilets. Uh, Baton Park drainage project, we had some site visit with the engineers from behind in Houston. Um, we'll have some pictures attached that I have on there, too. Ceiling tire replacement of Ace Hardware. Um, also, we're gonna do a new electric heater for the pavilion. Uh, briefings, key event dates, the detention center door sliders and closures are gonna be replaced this month. Uh, we have completed the HVAC replacement at the detention center. I'll go through those pictures here in a minute. Also, the two Casa lift station repairs have been completed. I just wanted to thank also, uh, Mr. Anizola for his help with his staff over doing that HVAC replacement at the detention center. There's a lot of foresight that goes into that and the planning that we have to do for, um, you know, inmate security and things like that. We have lifts, and we're working in special areas that we have to be really attentive to, so, but really smooth. And I just wanted to thank him and his staff. Also, my staff, especially, uh, Ben, uh, my staff, the electrician, he, uh, was an escort around there and helped out with the electricians, and it just, he had a lot of, uh, long hour workdays there, so. Couple pictures here, we got of the, of the crane lifting some HVAC units up there. Um, had to fight the, the rain and all that stuff. Some bad weather that came through. Some more pictures of the cranes lifting some old units off, new units on. Now Baton Park, just some of the drainage issues were just bringing to light, um, with the engineers that we've sent them. This is our middle field, um, and this field, you know, does not have a lot of good drainage happening for it, so, um, I think according to Randy, probably Randy's report, Mr. Hernandez, that we're, um, we're getting close to the final report of what their recommendations are, and so, um, just wanted to bring some light of what we deal with out there. Some more pictures of that same field. And, you know, monsoons really hurt us, cause in the summertime, you know, we'll go through and spend two, three weeks' work to get everything up and running, and it can be destroying two hours. Um, these pictures are the grading in the back. Um, so this is, we have a natural spring that sits behind this building, and it drains out to the west, and there was a lot of old drainage grading that was installed improperly from back in the day, and it was sagging and wasn't installed right, so, uh, we have new drainage installed now. Uh, the grating's all installed all the way like it should be, and we have this backside covered up, so the dirt does not get down in there anymore. Um, and so it's been, uh, I'd like to thank my staff, we installed all of that and just ordered the grading in. So I stand for any questions?
Was it, I guess, was it the work that we're supposed to do at Baton Park to le, wasn't it to alleviate this?
So, I think to an extent it was to alleviate it. Um, I don't think they had the full project convention for what we had funded at the time. And so, I know we put in, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we put an extra amount of money, and they facilitated, I think it was a sixty percent complete, as that was all we could afford at the time, from what I remember. So now we're just trying to finish it up from the rest of the recommendations, and having an actual site visit with the engineers was very beneficial. Um, so they can see the problem areas and what we're dealing with.
So Jason, as a current, um, it was a letting too, and we did part of it, um, and so we've been able to actually show them when we have instances like this, that we need them to relook at as they finalize the final portion of this drainage management plan, and we figure out how we alleviate the current issues that we have. So that was just the first part of that drainage, and, um, we hope to be able to utilize part of the money we have to do some more work, or we may be coming to you to ask for assistance, because we can't, can't leave it like this, and it's just, we fixed part of it, and then there's other issues that we have to address, so it's, um, it's just been a slow process.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Moving on to next report's gonna be our planning director, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Uh, for my current projects, uh, the Colonius project, Little Walnut Road Phase One construction, that is at ninety-five per, uh, ninety-seven percent completion. Uh, we are set to achieve substantial completion, um, this month, and final completion by March. Crum Road and Franks Road, uh, those design phases are in progress. I'm currently awaiting a design proposal from the engineers, and they can begin the work on that Colonius project. North Hurley Road, Phase Three construction, um, all of the temporary work, um, construction permits have been sent out to the property owners, and we're just waiting for responses back from them. Once we receive those, we'll be able to begin the bidding process and start that construction. For the Baton Park Veterans Memorial walking path, the design is a hundred percent complete. Uh, we are finalizing the bid documents, uh, and we should have final, um, the, we should have the bid released hopefully either this next week, or maybe the week after. Uh, this does incorporate four, four benches and lighting throughout this new path, um, so this, this captured pretty much all of, all of the veterans' requests, uh, and at this point, we'll just look to see what the bids come in at, to see what the current existing grant balance, and if the county, uh, is willing to put any, some mon, any money based into this, this project. Um, Hamilton Bridge replacement, with the design, the preliminary engineering report has been completed, uh, and they are working through the permitting process and the design, and this should be designed to state standards, uh, by June. Plumbing tank road improvements, the construction is at eighty-nine percent completion. We will have substantial completion this month as well, with final completion, um, in March. For Truck Bypass Road, that construction is at eighty-five percent completed. They are also, um, set to achieve substantial completion by March. They are working on the paving, um, hopefully this week and next if weather permits. Um, I know there's some issues with some of the, the shouldering. I know, Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten back to you, with Boston Hill area, where I've talked to the engineers, if there's any way that we can make that better, uh, but this process of the paving, there may be some areas where they could flatten that out a little bit. Um, so that one is, that one is on track. Some of these are, our three big projects, Little Walnut, Plumbing Tank, and Truck Bypass have all been delayed just because of the recent weather that we've been having, so original substantial completion should've been in January. Some of these weather days, uh, have pushed us into February, which pushes final completion into March, but we are working through, and the contractors are, are getting it done. The courthouse needs assessment, um, the preliminary design plans have been reviewed. They, uh, the architect, as well as the chief judge and court staff, will be here next, uh, for your March work session, so that presentation will, will happen then. The EDA grant, uh, if you have seen, I have probably flooded your emails with the workforce development trainings, so hopefully we can get those off the ground and get, um, get our public and our community these, these trainings and, and help, help our workforce out. The J.L. Brownfields, um, project, we have received a fully executed grant agreement. I'm working on the, finalizing the bid documents. Hopefully, we will have that released within the next month. The upper Mimbres, uh, water storage tanks, we are currently in the bidding process, that those bids are due at the end of this month, and we anticipated award at the March meeting. The capacity grant, um, we have contracted with Insight for strategic planning, grant writing, and grant consulting efforts. This is what Scott has mentioned to you about, some of the priorities that we've kind of tasked them with is trying to find funding for volunteer fire departments, uh, whether that's for equipment, um, any, anything related towards, towards the volunteer fire departments, so they will be working with Scott to get, to get that going. They'll also be working on maybe some standard operating procedures for us, some policies to help streamline some flow of our grants, grant processes. So as that progresses, we'll, we'll definitely share, share those updates with you. Uh, under the quality of life grant, um, Jason is working with a contractor to obtain a bid. Um, that project was accepted by you on last meeting, that is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the small field turf replacement at Baton Park. That one is not as affected by the drainage that Jason has showed you. That one is, is, is okay, so we are okay to replace that field. Um, so that one will be accomplished by the summer as well. Uh, for my future projects, I will be submitting, and it's also on your agenda, uh, for three Colonius projects, which is Rid Road Improvements Phase Two Construction, Arenas Valley Improvements Phase Two Construction, and Little Walnut Improvements Phase Two Construction, all of which have resolutions on the agenda, uh, to, uh, have you all approve the match requirement. I'll also be working on getting our comprehensive plan updated. Uh, we do have some funding through the EDA grant that I would like to get an RFP consultant on board to get that updated. Uh, for agenda items, I do have two agreements and three resolutions, and I'm happy to discuss those, um, later, later in this meeting. And I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Randy. Moving on to our road department, uh, Mr. Grijalva?
Mr. Chairman, kind of commissioners, um, road department on the current and finished projects pretty much, uh, are, are building a pretty much a routine up to do this last range stuff, they're pretty much trying to take advantage of the, of the moisture on, on the roads to compact the roads. Uh, the road crews took, addressing complaints has come in. We are working and finishing up the SP middle on Monday, we're starting Monday, but doing the snow, but a little bit delay, everything got saturated out there for, hopefully we can pick that up, uh, this coming week, whether, uh, depending on the weather. Our, we did actually switch over to, uh, trim trees for our next chi, uh, chip seal. So, uh, so our crew is on the roads that we're planning to chip seal in this coming year. Uh, we're gonna get on patching on those as soon as we're weather permitting. Of course, our future project, we finished one of the Lomaracross on the Monday, and we're gonna, uh, start on the second one. I did get a, a report on the environmental studies that we needed to be done on the two bridges that need work up in Lake Roberts and one in, uh, Royal John Mine. They're just about complete, uh, well, there's a couple of, of, uh, estimates I gotta give of our dirt removal on both of them, so hopefully by the end of this month, uh, we can get our permits in and get the work done on, on the Lake Roberts. If you don't recall, we need to remove some sediment and replace some rock gables on that one, and on the one on, uh, Royal John Mine, there's quite a bit of sediment that need to be removed on that, so hopefully by March, we can get on that and get those done. Our key event dates, uh, today, our road department will be attending the pipeline safety program here at the convention center. Uh, I feel it's a pretty important one for us to attend since our shop is basically on the pipeline. So, uh, it's, it, that last meeting I went to was pretty informative. They give you a lot of information on what to do in case of, of, uh, from all, from all sorts of scenarios, from bomb threats to leaks, uh, that'd be pretty interesting training to attend. And I believe that's all I have. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grijalva. Did I miss anyone?
No.
Can I ask Mr. Fuller a question?
Hmm?
Can I ask Mr. Fuller a question? Mr. Fuller, I got a quick question for you. Regarding the IPAS system, are you working with the municipalities where they can gain access to those as well? Okay. Okay, cause.
Yeah, because, um, I got contacted by the city of Bear, the clerk the other day was discussing the opportunity to have some type of emergency system for the city of Bear, and I think Hurley chimed in and said that they didn't have that system as well. That way the municipalities could have access to it. Or if you work with them and look at an option for them at least, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, next item on the agenda's gonna be review of the regular meeting agenda to county manager. It's all yours.
All right, commissioners, in front of you, I have the agenda for Thursday's meeting. We have your, uh, regularly scheduled Hila Regional Medical Center report from CEO Robert Whitaker. Uh, you have two, uh, sets of minutes to approve. Under presentations, down on item C, twenty-twenty-three RAP, whi, which stands for Risk Awareness, uh, Program. The county received, um, an award at the Legislative Conference in January for completing year five of the RAP program, and also reducing our law enforcement claims last year by forty-four percent. So I just wanted to acknowledge the staff and share the plaque with you. Um, also, under presentations, item D, I'd like to acknowledge, um, Connie Holgin and Les Trujillo. They, uh, received their, uh, certificate for graduating from the New Mexico Ed's Certified, um, County Clerk. They received their, both of them received their certifications also, um, at the conference in January, so I'd just like to acknowledge their hard work, um, for completing that program. Item E, we will hear a report from, um, the Forest Service on the Hila Wilderness Centennial, Hundred Years of the Hila Wilderness in twenty-twenty-four. We just give an update on, um, uh, the, the planning for that celebration that they have upcoming. Next, moving on to proclamations, you will have, uh, a proclamation for Territorial Charter Day presented by, uh, Raul Turrieta. We usually do this every. We usually do this every year in support of territorial charter day for the town silver city. Also, we will have a proclamation titled A Year of Celebration for the Hila Wilderness, which is an item by Commissioner Edwards. And that goes along with the Hundred Year Centennial Celebration for the Hila Wilderness.
Have you done on that, on that one?
I'm, I'm just curious, have you all received the, the text of that proclamation?
Yeah.
I would appreciate at some point, I know Commissioner Edwards uh would, of course she has a, a medical issue that prevents her from being here today, but she did ask me to, to find out if there were any concerns uh, you know, before Thursday's meeting, so. If at some point you could let her know uh, any issues about that proclamation, that would be great. Thank you.
Moving on to financial reports, item H, consideration of expenditure report dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Linda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, in your package, you have an expenditure report for approval. This covers the period from January third um through January thirtieth. And in there, there's um AP checks totaling three million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. With um payroll totals of five hundred and sixteen thousand, seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents. Um, the sum of the entire package is three million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, nine dollars and sixteen cents. And included in your packet is that list of um AP checks that are above the ten thousand. And is there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner? One?
I see we've made a, a payment to AFIS Wildlife Services. It feels like it's been over half a year that we've seen a report. Uh, it might be my memory. I know my memory's not, but it used to be. But uh, I don't believe I've seen them for a while, and I was asked recently about it and looked back and couldn't find one.
I thought I had sent those to you. Maybe I didn't, but I just got them.
I thought we got one a couple of weeks ago, didn't we?
I'll, I'll send it out again, but.
Okay. Yes. Name, or maybe I zapped it without thinking about it. That happens. Okay, I appreciate it.
We've been getting them ready early.
That's good to hear. I appreciate it.
Hold on real quick. Do you have any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you.
Next item is item I, consideration of fiscal year twenty-four quarter two financial report. Linda?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, I will go over those major funds of the quarterly report. And I will begin with the general fund. Um, the beginning cash was six million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Um, investments of sixteen million, nine hundred six thousand, six hundred two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Revenues of eight million, three hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred ten dollars and forty-three cents. And transfers out of two million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and fif- fifty cents. And expenditures of five million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Leaving a balance of twenty-four million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the reserves of one million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, in the road fund, the beginning cash was four hundred thirty thousand, sixty-seven dollars. And revenues of three hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. With transfers in of four hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and two cents. And expenditures of a million, forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Leaving a balance of two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. And with the reserve requirement of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars and seven cents. Um, in the detention center, we had the beginning cash of nine hundred ten thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars. With revenues of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And transfers in of one million, one hundred forty thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Expenditures of two million, forty-nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Leaving a balance of five, five hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and ten cents. Um, and then I'd like to report that in the uh general fund, we have um collected fifty point nine five percent of the budgeted um revenues. And in the um, to break it down, in the GRTs, we've received forty-one point ten percent of budgeted revenues. And the hold, hold harmless, it's sixty point five six percent that has been collected. In the compensating tax, it's fifty-two point six five percent that has been collected. In the current property taxes, it's seventy-six point two five that's been collected. In the um prior year taxes, it's forty-one point nine nine percent collected. And in the um penalties and interest on the property tax, it's seventy-five point seven five percent that has been collected. And um, we have um expended thirty-nine point ninety percent of our um expenditures that have been budgeted in the general fund. And um, in the road fund, in the road fund, we have collected thirty-five point nine percent of revenue that was budgeted. And the expenses are at forty-seven point eight one percent of what's been budgeted. And in the detention center, um, we have collected fifty-two point two four percent of the revenue that was budgeted. And our expenses are at forty-eight point seventeen percent of what was budgeted in the uh detention center. And um, I stand for any questions.
Do you have any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Linda. Are you concerned about the forty-one percent of GRT figure or, you know, or s- seven twelfths through the year?
So this is as of um December?
Oh, not as of one thirty?
No, 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 no. This is for the second quarter, so this is a report ending December thirty-first.
Okay, the, oh, I'm looking at the printed date. Okay, so it's still forty-one compared to fifty percent. Uh, that's not as bad. Do you, are you concerned about that? Do you think we'll come in at what we budgeted?
I believe we will. Um, I don't see a major concern on it um being on the fact that it's um collected two months prior to, so I'm hoping that the December um GRTs will come in a little higher. Which will receive that this month.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any else?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to new business, item J. This is an item tabled from uh the meeting last month. This is consideration of appointment to the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, the vacant position. Which would uh fulfill the remainder of its term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Next, item K, consideration and approval to publish notice of intent to adopt ordinance number O twenty-four zero one. An ordinance providing for the administration of the county fire departments. This is just an initial step so that you can see the uh initial draft that's been prepared. And this is just getting your approval to move forward with the first process of adopting a ordinance, which would be the notice of intent. Um, the purpose for this ordinance is to streamline um the administration of all Grant County Fire Departments. Currently, we have a set of bylaws for every department. They don't necessarily align. Um, as you're very well aware, at this point, we've had several issues around administration of fire departments and the way that we've handled that and the way that we've supported them. This just provides um an additional tool to provide um coordinated efforts. Um, so everyone's looking at the same document. We have the ability to do the things we need to do um without referencing nine different sets of bylaws or however many floating around there. This just streamlines the processes, um, streamlines the policies into one location. And I feel that it would be very beneficial. Um, Scott has been very involved with this. We've also sent this out several times to the volunteer fire chiefs. They've provided um a considerable amount of feedback and guidance. They're in support of it. Um, there may be some more, uh, more changes to this draft. Um, if there is, I'll make sure that I share those with you. Um, they might have some additional comments. Uh, Ben has also reviewed this and is in full support and has provided his um modifications um from a lea- from a legal aspect. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Just to simplify it, instead of having bylaws spread out through the different volunteer fire departments, we're gonna come into one sort of what runs in a standardized way. Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Quick question. Go ahead, Commissioner Camidio.
So with the county fire chief, are they gonna have the ability to do fire inspections for county buildings, county businesses, nothing like that? Okay.
Any other questions on this? Again, thank you guys for doing that.
Next, we'll move on to agreements. Item L, consideration of agreement A twenty-four zero seven. This is an appropriation agreement from um New Mexico um Department of Finance Administration of Economic Recovery Funding in the amount of a hundred thousand. Randy?
Chairman, members of the board, um, this agreement comes before you. Uh, this is an appropriation agreement from Department of Finance Administration. Um, during the twenty twenty-one legislative session, um, House Bill Two allocated six million dollars to the Department of Finance Administration. They were tasked with um releasing a grant for economic recovery for communities impacted by mineral and energy development. Um, so this just targeted a handful of communities that had um those in theirs, in their respective communities. Grant County requested a hundred thousand dollars with the intent to develop a computer lab at the Grant County Veterans Memorial uh Business and Conference Center. Uh, with this money, we will be able to get a lot of, a, a lot of computers set up as well as desks, any network infrastructure upgrades, audio visual upgrades. Uh, I'll be working with Adam uh to get that done. Uh, this does expire in June of twenty twenty-five, so we do have time. However, this, if, if kicked up here pretty soon, we can um, we can accommodate those that are taking the workforce development trainings. We can get, house them uh at the conference center to, to do those workforce development trainings. So this is a hundred thousand dollars that was awarded to us, and I would appreciate your approval on Thursday. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Randy.
Next, item N, consideration of agreement A twenty-four zero eight. This is capital appropriation agreement from aging and long-term services for the purchase of a vehicle for the member senior center in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Randy?
Chairman, members of the board, uh, this was allocated to the member senior center during last legislative session. Um, we've had some extensive conversation about the senior centers and the request for vehicles. This was one of them that was awarded. Um, member seniors, the member senior center was awarded thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. I have been working with the senior services director with HMS to make sure that this uh vehicle does get ordered and purchased. And at this point, we do not intend to ask for any more money for vehicles uh in the future, I C I P. I would appreciate your approval on Thursday, and I stand for any questions.
He asked for questions, not comments. Anyway, any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Randy.
We'll move on. Resolutions, item N, consideration of resolution R twenty-four zero eight, authorizing the submission of a colonius infrastructure fund application for ridge road improvements, phase two construction.
Chairman, members of the board, uh, before you is a resolution um authorizing the submission of an application. This is for ridge road improvements, base two construction. The entire amount that was received from our engineering firm to complete this phase is estimated at two point three million dollars. Uh, part of this requirement for colonias is a ten percent match. Um, the colonias applications are due March eighth, so we do need to get this. Uh, if this is one of the projects that you would like to see uh submitted for colonias, this will, this is the meeting to, well, Thursday will be the meeting to have this approved. Um, this is committing the amount of the match uh for it. If we are awarded, we will have to, to commit to it. Uh, and at this point, I stand for any questions.
What did you say the deadline was, March eighth?
March eighth is the deadline for the application submitted.
Do we have any comments on this or questions?
And at this point, this is committing the county to two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar um match as well as commitment to repay the same amount uh of a loan. Because if you do remember, colonias is a grant, loan and match um component.
So we'll be, our match is a two thirty-four, right, since it's a
Correct.
two point three million.
Correct.
And then what else goes on that?
Um, built into, built into the grant is also a loan, so it do require us to get a loan for that same amount of money, which is tied with, within the grant itself.
Well, are you, if you're
Go ahead, Tom, go ahead. You're probably headed in the wrong.
There's this, whereas the funds are delivered as ninety percent grant, ten percent loan, ten percent cash or in-kind match, which adds up to a hundred and ten percent, which is excellent if you're a, you know, a sports coach, but uh, I'm not sure how, how it fits in here.
So essentially, it's eighty percent grant, ten percent loan and ten percent match. But the way that the colonias, um, they're saying that their portion is ninety percent, which is the grant and the loan component.
Okay, ninety percent grant parentheses, ten percent of which is loan.
Correct. And ten percent match.
Okay. But we have to repay that ten percent.
Correct.
Doesn't sound like a grant to me.
Right. Yeah, that was a, one of the requirements for the colonias, um, the colonias um policies is that there is a loan component.
They changed that several years ago. It used to be really simple.
And then they threw in the loan component, so it's been that way for several years. You've approved them like this before.
Yeah, I'm sure we have. Seems like it would make more sense to call it eighty percent grant, ten percent loan.
And that's why we have to go through the whole process of NMFA stuff and.
Okay.
So we paid two thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Correct.
Plus then we're gonna be paying on a loan?
Correct.
But we only have two hundred and thirty-four thousand out of our pocket.
Because ten percent is in-kind? Is that why it's not doubling the way the chairs talk?
Right, it's not doubled. We, we have to come up with two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Right. And the other ten percent?
Is part of the loan. Is part of the appropriate, it's part of the grant, loan combination. So that's your ninety percent. We have to come up with ten. It's, it's comp, I don't even know how to begin to explain it. Um, it took me a couple of years to figure out why they changed it.
I, I understand.
You're out of buckets.
We covered ten percent, which is a two hundred and thirty-four thousand. But then it, when you tell me, as a normal person, citizen, that we're getting a loan, usually when I get a loan, I have to pay something back. So what do we pay there? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Is the loan part of the two hundred and thirty-four thousand?
The two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Throughout, I don't know.
Thirty years.
Thirty, twenty years.
So we're borrowing part of the two hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
No.
It sounds like we're paying two hundred and thirty-four thousand and then borrowing two hundred and thirty-four thousand and paying it for fifty years or whatever.
That's the way it works. So right off the bat, you have to have the two thirty-four when you begin the construction of the project. Then the piece of the loan, you're gonna be paying it throughout, I don't know, twenty years in payments. Then you pay off the piece of the loan component.
And what are we getting out of this?
Two point three million dollar project for two hundred and thirty-four.
Or for four, for four hundred and sixty-eight?
No.
You see, that's why, that's why we're messed up.
It's not doubled.
So the, okay, let me go back to the text then. It says, we are allocating two hundred and thirty-four thousand for the loan component. Also allocating two hundred and thirty-four thousand cash or in-kind. When I see that, it adds up.
We have to set aside two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in cash. We have to say that we have that. We pay that back over the term of what Linda just described for the two hundred and thirty-four thousand in a loan. It's a requirement for colonias. We have no way around it. That's just how it works.
I, I understand.
And I don't know how to, I don't know how to clearly articulate it, obviously.
The, the thing here is not that we have to do it. The thing is trying to understand what we're doing. Because the way he said it, it sounds like two thirty-four, two thirty-four, but in reality, we're setting aside two thirty-four and paying it off in thirty years.
Correct.
Correct.
Did I understand that right?
Yes, immediately it's
So it's not gonna be more than the two thirty-four. It's just, we get two thirty-four, that's the loan, that's what we're paying, that's required for this loan.
So, so this resolution agrees to uh have that loan component and then supplement it with a match.
Got it, I think.
So at this point, the, the Board of Commissioners is saying we are agreeing to a two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar loan, and then we will supply the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar match to pay that.
To pay the loan.
To pay off the loan.
Correct.
Yes.
And then it is, it is billed to us, I think, on a yearly basis um through the Mexico Finance Authority, or depending on, on the terms and conditions that are that are um worked out throughout the, the loan grant agreement.
So you're saying aside the two thirty-four, that way when these payments come up, we pay it out of that two thirty-four? Is that what we're getting?
Correct, yes, cuz that, 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 essentially that part of money is being set aside.
You have a reserve fund, correct?
Yes. So there's a reserve fund we have to set aside that pulls that money that we pay that from.
I think I get it.
Well, so, okay, let me ask then, where in that picture does in-kind contribution fit?
In-kind is if the county does not wanna put cash. Right, so typically, sometimes in the past, if the road department does have the capacity, they can, they can do some of that work, and they are charged P L G R F rates. There are certain rates for equipment, there, you're tar, you're, you're factoring in the employee's wages, and that's all calculated as in-kind match. Sometimes, you know, depending on the, the capacity and the, the stepping bra, uh, bandwidth of the, the road department, sometimes we may just may choose to do cash instead.
So, let's just say, so that we can picture how this all works, that we are gonna contribute two hundred and thirty-four thousand in in-kind. Let's just say we have the equipment, and for some reason, we're all set up, we can do this. Does that mean we don't have to set aside the two hundred and thirty-four thousand? Or does that mean we set it aside, and then as we contribute in-kind services, we pay ourselves from what we set aside?
I don't know. I think we still have to pay the loan.
You still have to pay the loan.
We pay the loan and we provide the in-kind. And if we don't provide the in-kind, then we pay the loan and we pay the cash.
Correct.
Which sounds like four hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
This is why we prefer to do it the way that we proposed these last few Colonius projects to you. Put up the cash, put in the reserve program, and we pay it back without. And our road department doesn't have the capacity to do the in-kind services for this level of projects, or the time, or the manpower.
So for, for my, the way I've explained, what I think I, I understand, we're not gonna pay more than two hundred and thirty-four thousand?
No, we're not.
Okay.
I don't know why we lift a finger in kind, that makes no sense.
I'm confused too. You, you don't?
Says here, we could.
It says you can.
Right.
That's what the county manager just said.
But that, that's like, for stupid people. Should say, if we're stupid, we'll do this.
Exactly. That's good. But yeah, the county manager just explained it, we're not gonna do it that route, this is the route it's gonna do. That, that's just typical Colonius.
I don't know either. Well, to see the final bill, I guess. Are you guys good with this, Ron?
Yes.
For now? Till Thursday, we good with this one till Thursday?
Um, I'm just gonna mention the next two O and P and let Randy talk about both of them. Um, same scenario, unfortunately. Uh, authorizing the submission of a Colonius Infrastructure Fund application for Arenas Valley Road Improvement, space, phase two. Um, that's right, phase two construction? For Arenas Valley?
Yeah, if we're classifying design as phase one.
Okay, gotcha. And then, um, resolution R twenty four ten is Little Walnut, uh, phase two construction.
Uh, chairman and members of the board, these two resolutions that manager just mentioned, uh, these are the similar Colonius, uh, for the, for these projects that we tend to submit, which is the three. Uh, so the first one was Ridge Road, the second one is Arenas Valley. Uh, as you may recall, the entire design estimate for the entire two and a half miles of Arenas Valley Road came in just over nine million dollars. Uh, at this point, we have asked our engineers to best phase that out as we can. They determined that we can do a three and a half million dollar phase, uh, which will fall in line with the Colonius requirement. Uh, and that does require a three point, uh, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, I'm sorry, it's a three point nine million dollar phase. Uh, so this will require a three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar, um, max requirement. Same for the second one, which is Little Walnut Road Improvement Phase Two Construction. Uh, that price tag for the, the estimate that came in for that second phase of construction is just over six point eight million dollars. This resolution is requiring, uh, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar match.
So, are you going there or am I going there?
I have no need to repeat what we just did.
Is that the same on this one as the other one?
Yeah, both, these three are all the same.
With the loan and the not paying and paying and not paying. Okay, so Arenas Valley Road, three hundred and ninety-one K match, and the Little Walnut Road was eight, six hundred and what?
Six hundred and eighty.
Eight, six eighty.
Six hundred and eighty-six, three forty.
So on these projects, we're, we're probably in match in the million, about a million, million point one, somewhere near.
Should be about one point three, one point two, one point three.
One point four million nearly.
Something like that. It keeps going up, it's a step.
We're good with all that? I mean, we have to do these projects, I guess, or, but.
Yes, we have the L A T C F funding that we had and chose to put towards the match.
And understand that these are just application processes, there's no guarantee that we are gonna get awarded these ones. I also, uh, will be submitting some similar, some of these projects, I have to really determine which ones will be, which will best probably, maybe have a chance through the, the Department of Transportation's, uh, Transportation Project Fund. That one, um, is a five percent match, so that's a little bit lower, that does not have a loan component. So I do need to, out of these three, I need to really determine which one I, which one you all, uh, would probably best like, submitted through that one, and that one is also coming up here within the next few months.
Why, why wouldn't we just submit the largest one that way?
Cause there's not that much money in T P F funding as there is in Colonius.
Yeah, and then, uh, this, this, um, this year for the Colonius, in talking to Chris Lozero, it's a record number, eighty-seven and a half million. At this point, our max ask couldn't be fifteen percent of that, which is thirteen, thirteen point something million, which does re, these three projects hit that, hit that cap.
Nice calibration.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem, I mean, these are projects that need to get done. I mean, that, that's, you know, I just, it's a little steep. You know, while we're talking about Colonius, can you do me a favor, and I'm gonna probably get with Commissioner Medina here in a while? Lake Roberts area, Trout Valley, is that Colonius?
At the top of my head, I don't know, I'll have to go back and look at the, the resolutions that, that were established. I think back in the eighties or the nineties that, that designated Colonius. Um, if you wanna give me a second, I can look.
No, I mean, just down the week, I need to get with Commissioner Medina, cause that's pretty much in his district, but I had some, uh, I was told that they're part of the Colonius, they have some road issues and, and maybe they wanna look at their, some of the water system there, so. Um, I'll get with Commissioner Medina, he could do that, I'd wanna get involved with, you know, that, that piece, but anyway.
Um, Lake Roberts, I'm sorry, I just had a chance to look, Lake Roberts is designated as a Colonius.
Okay, I'll get with Commissioner Medina, thank you.
One small question, the Capital Projects Construction Fund, that, that's included in our fund reports, right?
Yes.
Yeah, do you know of him, what? Just to save me some scrolling time, what number, fund number is?
It's under Capital Projects, I believe. Three nine nine.
Three nine nine, okay. Thank you.
Are you ready? Not yet.
No, yeah, I'm ready, I'm just reading some other stuff here real quick.
Next is item Q, consideration of resolution R twenty four eleven, this is a budget just, budget adjustment request.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, do you have a bar in your packet for, um, consideration to approve? And, um, the first adjustment would be an increase in revenue in the general fund, um, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And this is for the, um, the check we receive from Sun, Sunzia Transmission. Um, the next one would be a transfer in of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents into the Fort Baird Fire Department and, um, from the Santa Rita Fire Department in the same amount. And this is to, um, carry over the cash from, um, Santa Rita Fire Department now that they merged the two fire departments together. Um, on the next one, um, I have several, um, grants. And the first one is from the New Mexico Fire Protection, uh, Grant for fiscal year twenty-four, and this is for P A Fire Department. Um, so we would be increasing, um, revenue and expenses by three hundred thousand, and this is to purchase a fire truck. Um, the next one is a New Mexico Fire Protection Grant for Tyron Fire Department in the amount of fifty-five thousand, sixty, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, and this is both increasing revenue and expenses. And then this is for, uh, facility improvements. And the next one is a fire protection grant for Fort Baird Fire Department, um, increasing revenue and expenses by a hundred and fifty thousand. And this is for communication equipment. And the next one is for a fire protection grant for the Grant County Fire Admin in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is for a, uh, stipend for fire, uh, departments. And, um, the next one is, um, a JAG grant for the Sheriff's Office. And, um, this is increasing revenue and expenses by forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. And this is to purchase, um, tasers for the department. And then on the next one, I have, um, the Code Caminos, um, transfers in and out from, um, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. The other Code Caminos is forty-seven thousand, eight hundred, five dollars and twenty cents. And this is just, um, cash transfer in and out from operating to admin in the Code Caminos grants. And this is just to, um, clear out and close out these two grants. And I stand for any questions.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it answers a question or a comment, but I mentioned a couple of months ago that we were expecting this ninety-nine thousand, almost a hundred thousand dollars from Sunzia, and that, uh, this seemed like a perfect time to, uh, establish a position that was recommended in our open space and trails master plan. Somebody to, to coordinate the efforts to develop, uh, our trail system connected to municipal trail systems and forest trail systems, uh, coordinate activity, recreational activities, things like that. Uh, so, I'm saying, now we're finally seeing that, even though we knew it was coming, it's finally being incorporated into the budget. Uh, there's no scheduled offsetting expenditure for that money. We are expecting more of it, another two hundred and some thousand. So we had funding for, for this position for several years, I believe, and now seems to me to be the time that we as a commissioner can say, okay, we've got this plan, we've waited quite a while, now it's time to, to start implementing. That's, that's my comment, and, and, uh, you know, you have a couple of days before Thursday's meeting. I'd be happy to resend that plan if anybody doesn't have it already, I'll, I'll send it out and, and show you the recommendation that was made that we accepted, but we haven't moved on.
Yeah, go ahead, refresh my memory.
Perfect.
And thank you.
Thank you.
If it's any longer than yesterday, I'm gonna remember. Anything else? Go ahead.
Next, item R, consideration of resolution R twenty four twelve in support of the, good grief, Hila Cliff Dwellings National Monument Application for Designation as an International Dark Skies Sanctuary. The commission received a letter requesting support of this application for this designation. And, um, in low level letter of support, um, Commissioner Edwards graciously drafted the resolution that is in your packet in support of their application for that dark skies, uh, sanctuary.
So, um, I, I read the resolution, and I, I'm assuming Commissioner Edwards wrote it?
She did.
So, you know, reading the resolution, it, it talks about in, international dark skies. Maybe I'm not understanding it a little bit, but, I mean, when I see this or, or read this, it's, you know, we don't, you know, we wanna see stars, we wanna see all that, right? But this resolution, it doesn't go to that? Everything in there is very important, you know, like the culture and, and, and the learning and all this and that. But it's not telling us, basically, when they wanna, you know, pretty much all of this is on, on Hila National Forest, correct? So, when I look at this, is it, they don't want lighting, they don't want stuff to obstruct that? Or am I missing the boat on this? I don't remember the email I got on it. I wanted it on here, but I'm a little confused because I don't see anything being built. And I'm in support of it, don't take me wrong. I don't see anything being built that's gonna take away from that. Does that make sense?
So the, the purpose of this resolution was in lieu of a letter of support, they asked you for a letter of support, and usually it's my recommendation when somebody asks for a letter of support from the entire commission, we usually just do a resolution that says we're supporting your application, and that's all this is. It is, you're just, it's just something they can put in their application for this, um, designation that says the Grant County Commission supports, um, this designation. Um, it's very similar, there's the campground that's just north of the county line that's, um, has a similar type designation. And we did that probably before you were in office, but it's just, it's just your support of their application.
No, and I understand that, I mean, I, I see what this is. I'm, I'm, my curiosity is, you know, the way it's, uh, maybe I just need to get with Commissioner Edwards because I don't see nothing being built there or anything like that. I'm just trying to understand it because people will ask, and I'm trying to understand what, because, I mean, I agree with everything that's written here, but, you know, I'm thinking we wanna keep it dark skies, we don't want streetlights, we don't want development and stuff like that, that's what I'm taking it as. Maybe I need to get with Commissioner Edwards or Commissioner Brown, do you?
Well, I have a thought.
What's your thought?
You might be better off getting together with Commissioner Edwards. My, my thought is this has, not, you know, often we see these things and they're about preservation or conservation. This isn't one of those things. I don't think this has to do with your question, like, are they gonna build something, this is gonna stop them from building something? No. It's just a designation, right? It's just, this international organization has a list of places where people can go to experience dark skies. And what the monument is trying to do is get on that list. And we're saying, yeah, we support them getting on that list. It's not stopping anything from happening. And, and I think, you know, the idea is if you're on that list, you might get more visitors, and more visitors might be good for us.
And I just found the email and realized that we do have the experts in the audience, but it is, it says the designation would put us on the map for visitors that wanna experience a near pristine night sky. And anticipate this designation would increase our visitation as well, so I would.
You, you know, I, I understand that in, in getting more visitors, but what, I mean, you know, I still have sour grapes with the Forest Service as far as what they did to the campgrounds, you know, and we wanna get more visitors, we wanna do this, but when we sit down at campground and do all this, I don't see how you're getting more visitors. I support it, don't take me wrong, and I'm just going off on a thing, but, uh.
And it is the National Park Service.
Right, but, anyway, do we want?
I, I would, since you have some questions.
You wanna come up here and explain this a little bit to me?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, I have the same concern.
There might be a button to turn it on.
Oh, um, so it was mostly correct, um, we aren't really seeking any construction of any type, it's just to put us on the map. The Dark Skies is an organization based in Tucson. Their, their goal is to protect places, and we're seeking to do that application. Um, it does have proven eco, eco-tourism benefits to it. Um, but for our purpose of doing it, it's mainly preserving our astronomical heritage, the Hila Cliff dwellings um, honors that celestial heritage of our ancestors who once gazed upon the same stars. Uh, these cliff dwellings were built by the Mohegan people. They provide exchangeable links to our past by protecting their night skies, we ensure that future generations can connect with the same cosmic wonders. We're going to the eco-tourism, dark sky tourism is a growing trend, visitors seek out these places where they can witness celestial wonders unobstructed by city lights. And with the two mountain ranges, it blocks any light that was from the mine or from Silver City, which are already minimal. Um, and that name the Hila as a dark sky, uh, sanctuary attracts the tourists, boosts local economies, and fosters appreciation for conservation efforts. It's an investment in sustainable tourism and community development.
So can you, I'm sorry, may I ask?
No, go ahead.
Can you verify what Commissioner Brown said, that there's no requirement, such as if there's private property out there? So if so-and-so wants to put up a barn like, uh, this isn't gonna, there's no, uh, there's no teeth to this proclamation, we're just joining an organization celebrating our dark sky?
Yes, that's correct. There will be no, um, new, I can't remember the word you just used for it, but there. I can't remember the word he just used, but there will be no teeth to it.
Okay.
And then it'd just be the sanctuary, it would be just the Park Service property.
I think it goes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
You see, and, and exactly what you said, I, I think this is, this is a good resolution, don't take me wrong, but I think that it needs to have in there something about protecting our dark skies in, in the resolution itself. You know, because it does go, you know, um, you know, preservation, culture provide, you know, ecological, environmental, econ, economic benefit for local communities. I think it has that piece, but I had that conversation with Commissioner Edwards, because I think we, we got everything in there, which is true, it, it's, it's perfect, but it doesn't tell us why we're doing this resolution. Other than the title. And, and, I, I think we need to do that. Co, uh, Commissioner Medina?
I'm just, I just got an odd question, I asked Commissioner Brown, can you give me the answer? He did, so I might ask a question. So, dark skies is night time, you know, it's, it's common sense. Um, doesn't that monument close at night?
Um, it does, the, we have a gate that goes to the monument, or the dwellings itself that does close, but the Forest Service and Park Service jointly maister parking lot, it would still be in that area.
So residents could go hang out in the parking lot, and, okay.
And, and Woody's and T J Corral and Scorpion Upper and Lower, those are all within the monument, right?
Yep.
Um, they are Forest Service land, apparently.
Apparently.
It's, it's, it's a weird situation, it's Forest Service.
I always thought those were part of the monument.
Sorry?
No, nothing, just saying, I'd always thought those were part of the monument. So those are Forest Service land, right adjacent to the monument. And the people who camp there would benefit presumably from the dark sky, or do benefit from the dark skies already?
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have? Yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem with the resolution, as long as we're not joining some organization that is advocating for infringement of private property rights by saying you can't put up lights. So, and I don't, I think, uh, you've answered my question, that's not the case, so thank you.
I just wanna make sure that our, our people that visit the campsites are also respected. If they have lights on their RVs, if they have lights for their tents, whatever it is, that, that doesn't infringe on their, um, rights as well.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Makes sense, because campers do take generators out there, and they do have RVs, and they do have lights on them. I just wanna make sure if somebody's not gonna run around and tell them, shut your lights off, you can't have your lights on.
But this is only the Park Service property.
That's what I say.
Yeah.
Good question.
And I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I hear Tucson, I hear Arizona. You know, I'm wondering what Katrin County and, and Grant County think about this, because in reality, that isn't Katrin County, correct? So I'm just wondering, I, I understand what Tucson wants, but what does Grant County and Katrin County want? Does anybody know that piece?
Well, I think Tucson is just where that organization's headquartered at, too.
Right.
We, you know, there's already a, a dark sky campground, like the Cosmic Campground, if they call it? That's in Katrin County. And as far as I know, that hasn't encountered opposition, but it's possible I've missed the opposition. Seems to me that's a successful campground. I know people who've gone there, have set up their telescopes, and have really appreciated it.
I'm, uh, yeah, I, I, I probably just need to get with Commissioner Edwards on this.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, a sentence at least about actual importance of dark skies would be helpful to the resolution.
Um, guess that's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, item S, consideration of resolution I twenty-four thirteen, county travel policy and procedures. This is an update as a result of, uh, travel rule updates that came down from D F A. That letter outlining what those rule updates are is included in your packet, there are several of them, and we are required, um, to make sure that our policy is compliant with those changes, um, no later than March first. That is why an update to the policy, as well as all the relevant forms are in there for you to look at, um, to make sure that we are in compliance with, um, uh, D F A. Questions? We don't have a choice on this one, we just, our policy has to match the rules. And that's all we're doing.
Questions?
Next, um, moving on to, uh, the Grant County Healthcare Claims. Item T, consideration of health claims, um, from December of twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, November, December, twenty twenty-three. We had ten claims billed to the county, um, in the totaling nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and nine cents. Native were disallowed for thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. One was denied for one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars due to the patient being taken, um, to the hospital before incarceration. The amount recommended for payment is four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Next down for any questions.
Questions, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll leave.
And you have your regular Commissioner reports, as well as a limited, uh, personnel matter in executive session in regards to the county manager, and that concludes your agenda.
So moving on to, thank you, uh, County Manager. Moving on to, uh, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Not today, thank you.
Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
Not today.
Commissioner Brown?
Uh, you know, a question that really was just at the, should have been in the last item, but we're not, uh, making an appointment at this meeting? I thought that we were gonna have that on the agenda.
Appointment of what?
Yeah, it's on there.
For the trustee?
Yeah, and I just went.
It was one of the first ones, uh?
It's item J.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, don't know what was happening in the meeting, we went by J. Thank you. Uh, no, no further report.
And then I think we have an executive session on that too today, right?
Right, that was why, that for sure it would be on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Medina.
So, I think I'll just hold off on my comments till Thursday. Mike, Commissioner Cummins? So if I can, uh, have a motion to go on executive session in accordance with N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one, sub H two and H nine. It's gonna be, uh, limited personnel matters pursuant to the county manager, and then long-range, uh, strategic and long-range planning for Hila Regional Medical Center.
Mr. Chair, some more.
One second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, uh, second by Commissioner Medina, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Deputy Clerk, we have a roll call, please, on roll call.
Commissioners, are you all aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman Bonsa?
Yes.
Commissioner Billings?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Okay, um, this will go to the red room. Should be no action on this, all action will be taken care of on Thursday, so thank you.